Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7 o'clock PM. Welcome to this November 25th, 2024 City of Burlingame Planning Commission Meeting. For all in attendance today, please note that this Planning Commission meeting is being held in person and using the Zoom webinar format. Please note that we are not accepting remote public comment during commission meetings. We ask that the public either attend the meetings in person to a comment or send an email to publiccomment@berlingame.org. Staff will be monitoring emails submitted during the meeting, which will be read at the appropriate time. Agenda item number two, roll call. The record should note that all seven members of the commission are present this evening. Agenda item number three, request for AB 2249, remote participation. We do not have any this evening. Agenda item number four, approval of the minutes. We do have meeting minutes to approve from October 15th and November 12th from the regular planning commission meetings. Do we have any comments, changes, discussions over the minutes or any motions?
I just want to say I did read and watched the film on October 15th, but I was not present.
Very well. Any other comments or motions? We're gonna need two motions, alright, or can we do one motion for both?
You could, you could do one motion for both.
You wanna take a stab?
Sorry. I'll second that motion.
Your first motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting minute from October 15th and November 12th.
And a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schmidt, seconded by Commissioner Camarado. Any discussion? No? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Camarado?
Aye.
Commissioner Foff?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
Commissioner Shores? Commissioner Say?
Aye.
Vice Chair Heran?
Aye.
Chair Loenthal?
Aye. Motion passes 7:00. Agenda item number five, approval of the agenda. Staff, do we have any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes.
And I assume no recusals this evening? Agenda item number six, public comments on agenda. Members of the public may speak out on any item not on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to suggest an item for a future planning commission agenda may do during the public comment period. The Ralph Brown Act, the state local agency open meeting law prohibits the planning commission from acting on any matter that is not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes each. Do we have any members of the public sending in person who wish to speak, that wish to speak on any item that's not on the agenda? I don't see any. Do we see, receive any public comment emails?
We did not.
Alright. We'll move on to agenda item number seven, study items. We do not have any this evening. Agenda item number eight, consent calendar. We do not have any consent calendar items this evening. So, on to agenda item number nine, regular action items. Agenda item number nine A is text amendments to Title 25 related to accessory dwelling units. Staff will make a presentation.
Alright, yes, it'll be easier to do it from the podium here. So, good evening commissioners. Staff is requesting that the planning commission recommend to the city council an ordinance pending Title 25, those being chapter 25.40, 25.48, 25.60, 25.88, 25.98, and 25.100 to amend existing accessory dwelling unit regulations to be consistent with Government Code Section 66310 through 66341, otherwise noted as state law. It's all referred them, to them throughout my presentation. Let's see. Go ahead, next slide. So, just as a reminder, an accessory dwelling unit or an ADU is a smaller independent residential living unit that's on the same lot as an existing single-family or multifamily dwelling. On your screen, you can see kind of the typical types of ADUs that we see, that we have seen over the last couple of years. So, you can convert a portion of your home to an ADU. You can convert a detached structure or typically detached garage to an ADU. You can also build a new detached ADU or an addition to your home. One thing this slide doesn't show is that you can do an ADU as part of a new single-family dwelling, which we've seen a lot in designer view of the new homes. This slide also doesn't show junior accessory dwelling units or JD, JADUs. Those are again within the walls of an existing home, or it can be part of a new home. It is limited to 500 square feet, though. Next slide. So, in 2017, 2018, and 2020, that's not my time up, so. I think somebody has just turned on the alarm in one of the departments. In 2017, 2018, and 2020, the city adopted code amendments to Title 25 or the zoning code in response to state law which addressed the housing shortages throughout the state and local housing shortages here. Further refinements to the AD ordinance were made when we did the zoning code update in 2021. During that time, state law, or California signed into law a number of bills to encourage the construction of ADUs and JADUs by reducing regulatory barriers commonly found in the zoning code. And since 2021, additional state laws were passed which are not currently reflected in our current AD regulations. Just to give you an idea, in the last, well, in 2023, we've approved about 40 ADU permits and roughly the same have been built during that same year. So, that's kind of the level that we're seeing in Burlingame. Earlier this year, the Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, reviewed our city's ADU regulations and found that we were not in compliance with state law. And much of that had to do with us not updating our regulations in the last couple of years. The HCD issued us a letter stating that we must correct our ADU regulations to be in compliance with state law. So, that's part of the process that we're going through now. The draft ordinance includes text amendments to the city's existing ADU regulations to ensure that we're consistent with state law, but it also captures state laws that were approved this year that go into effect January 1st. So, we're folding those in as we're doing the update. Next slide. A couple of key points that I'll go over this evening. ADU permits. We'll also talk about statewide exemption ADUs, setbacks, height limits, and the new state laws that were passed this year, SB 1211 and AB 2533. Next slide. So, with ADU permits currently under our zoning ordinance, we require applicants to first obtain an ADU permit before applying for a building permit. This code amendment would eliminate the ADU permit, so applicants would just have to go straight to the building division. Planning would review the ADU proposal as part of the building permit review, just like we do now. But we are cutting that step out, and mainly it's to streamline the process. And it'll also eliminates the ADU permit fee. This all removes regulatory barriers, again to help streamline and encourage construction of ADUs. It also reduces staff time. Be surprised how much staff time is spent on just approving and reviewing an ADU permit. So, this would, it would, the review would not change. We're still looking to make sure that the ADUs comply with our codes and with state law. It's just that we're removing a necessary step, really. Next slide.
Through the chair. Can I just add something before you move too fast?
Sure.
I had two questions. The first one was, you mentioned we had roughly 40 ADUs approved and built last couple of years?
In 2023, I just looked back at.
Whatever. Okay. I was just curious for our knowledge, since we don't see them. I'd be interested to know, were they about half-half once involved with a bigger project, like a whole new house? Or were they maybe half of them, were they just an extra ADU somewhere? Do you have any idea?
I mean, we could look that information up off the top of my head. I would say probably, it seems like we've seen more recently them included as part of a new house. To venture a guess, I would say maybe a third are done that way. The rest of the two-thirds are done either by building a new detached ADU or incorporating it as part of a house, or converting a house, or converting a garage to an ADU.
Okay. I forgot my second question, so that's fine. Thank you.
We'll come back. Statewide exemption ADUs. So, statewide exemption ADUs have been around since 2020. We didn't really focus on making that type of ADU clear in our code. So, with this update, we want to be in line with state law. And what a statewide exemption ADU is, is it kind of even streamlines more the approval because it removes a lot of the regulations from these types of ADUs. A statewide exempt ADU is a JADU. It's also an ADU that's converted within the existing house or an existing accessory structure, or if it's built as part of a new house. An ADU, a statewide exempt ADU is also a new detached ADU with limits. So, it can't exceed 800 square feet. It has to have four-foot side and rear setbacks. And it has to comply with the height limit. One key thing to note about statewide exempt ADUs is that if you comply with all of these rules, you can do all three on your property. So, that's one thing that wasn't as quite as clear in our code. But now, for example, you can do, you can convert a portion of your house to a JADU. You can convert a portion of your house to an ADU, and you can build a new detached ADU. So, that's what state law allows. Next slide.
Ruben?
Yes.
But it's limited to one of each, or is it not limited?
It's not limited. You can do all three if you.
Oh, no, but.
One.
Oh, yes, yes.
Limited to one of each? That?
Yes.
Put a physical limit on it, or?
Yes. You can do one JADU. You can do one new detached ADU. Or, and you can do one conversion ADU. And that can be a conversion of space within your house or within an accessory structure. Yeah, but one of each, correct. Alright, in terms of setbacks, current regulations exempt ADUs from setback requirements. We want to be in line with state law, so we're now saying all ADUs must comply with the four-foot side and rear setbacks. It helps in many ways. It helps with meeting building code requirements for openings along those property lines. It also helps put a little bit more buffer, because typically they're in the, in the rear yard. So, it creates a little bit more of a buffer. You can't, you can't require more than four feet, but now we're saying you've got to be at least four feet. This would apply for a new detached ADU, or if you're like converting an existing detached garage and adding to that structure. The addition would have to comply with the four-foot side and rear setbacks. Yes.
Go ahead. But if, let's say you have a garage that's almost on the property line, and you tear that garage down, are you allowed to put the ADU right back where the garage was?
Yes. So, as long as it's in the same location and with the same dimension, you can replace it in its current location. That's one situation where it's exempt from the setback requirement. Yeah.
But then if you want to expand that garage, convert, converting to a detached ADU, any larger than that current shell, then you must comply with the setbacks for the area of addition, or that, the whole structure?
The whole structure.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you're, the only way you can maintain that existing non, let's say, setback of less than four feet is if you're just converting the structure, not changing it, you're just converting the structure. You're replacing the structure in the same location within the same dimensions. But if you want to do that and make it larger, all bets are off. You need to now comply with the four-foot.
And that includes a second story?
Correct. Yep. So, there could be situations, and we'll talk about heights on the next slide, but there could be a situation where you have an existing, let's say detached garage, you want to build an ADU on top of that. Just that portion on top has to comply with four-foot side and rear setbacks. Yeah.
Ruben, I have one question. So, I can, I anticipate down the road, there might be some issues as we get into the real estate part of it, where in the future, if somebody is going to sell their property and they now have this existing structure ADU that doesn't comply with the four-foot setback, and we have these rules, will they be able to go back? Because legally now, people will be worried, well, it doesn't comply with the new rules, right? So, is, will they be able to go back? I guess my question is, can we put something in the code that says this is a new rule as of date of such and such and such and such? Because what happens is now people will go back and say, well, it doesn't comply, you're not in compliance, even though it got approved. Kind of, I'm just thinking.
Yeah, I mean.
A little bit?
If you, if you were issued a building permit or an ADU permit for that structure?
At that.
That, that proves that it complied at the, yeah. So, there's no, there's really no issue. In most cases, you just have to show proof that you have obtained a permit for it.
Yeah, that's.
But even, even with AB 2533, I think it talks about unpermitted ADU. And we have to approve unpermitted ADUs as long as they comply with health and safety codes. So, we'll talk about that in a little bit, too.
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Yeah. Alright, I covered the last point already. Next slide. Alright, so on the height limits, our current regulations limit detached ADUs to 16 feet in height and one story. So, HCD said, can't do that, can't limit it to one story. We're talking about detached ADUs. And that's because, number one, state law says you can do two-story. And we're also catching up with state law that was approved last year that requires a couple more feet in addition to that 16 feet. So, in general, 16 feet is still the maximum height. However, if you're located within half-mile walking distance of a major transit stop, like a train station or a high-quality transit corridor like El Camino, you are allowed to go an additional two feet, up to 18 feet. And then in addition to that, if you're within half-mile, you can go an additional two feet if you're trying to match the roof pitch of the house. Kind of gives you some flexibility, but. So, essentially 18 feet. For existing or proposed multifamily, multi-story buildings, regardless of where you're located, you can automatically do 18 feet. 18 feet, it's, it's, you can get two stories in there. It's, it's pretty tough. But we just received an application in last week where they were able to do it. They just did eight-foot ceilings with one foot of floor or space in between the two floors and, you know, a slight pitch on the roof. And they were able to get 18 feet in that, so. It also eliminates the plate height restrictions. So, HCD said you can only regulate the overall height of the building, not anything else as it relates to height.
Ruben, is that from finished floor? Is that 18 feet, or because what if somebody wants to do a foundation, a foundation?
Right.
Of a slab?
It is, it is, I believe, from grade. So, they would have to, right. So, they would have to either, you know, there's different ways you can handle this lot on that. You can sink it possibly. You know, we saw single-family homes doing that a lot. There are some drainage issues you have to deal with in that case. Or you can do, you know, a lower slope roof with dormers and get that additional floor above the first floor.
And?
Yes.
These windows are allowed, though it's four feet. On the second floor, windows are allowed?
Correct. They, because these are new, this would be a new addition or new structure, they would automatically be four feet over. And we also rely on the building code and fire code requirements in terms of regulating openings near property lines. But from my understanding, four feet would still work. It would still comply.
Could you technically have a JADU on top of an ADU?
So, JADUs have to be within an existing single-family dwelling or proposed.
So, could you do an ADU on top of an ADU, or two, two separate units built on top of each other?
No.
No, okay.
Not yet.
If it's attached, see, if it's part of the primary dwelling, let's say you have a house, and then you do an ADU on the ground floor, and then you convert part of your second floor to a JADU. That's, that's one way you can get a stack that way. We haven't seen that done too much. Most people decided to just do a JADU or an ADU. We've seen some cases where they've done both, but it seems like the most common is either doing one or the other.
Ruben, was our code before 850 square foot for an, mine is, I think, 849 square feet?
Yeah, yeah. So, with the statewide exempt ADU, state law says 800 square feet.
Okay.
Because we didn't make that distinction back in 2020, we just said, okay, anything up to 850 square feet is exempt because that was the minimum or maximum allowed for a one-bedroom. Here, we want to be more in line with state law. So, if you're doing.
Does that square footage go against you if you want to end up building, if he wants to build a JADU on?
JADU, it's already counted as part of your existing floor area because it's part of the existing house.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just a technical clarification. So, we currently look at homes, single-family homes, building height is based on the average top of curb?
For, for, for a new, single-family home, yes, average top of curb.
But then the building height for these ADUs are based on grade and not the average top of curb?
Correct.
So, you could have a situation where the ADU is taller than the house, a proposed house, if the house is limited.
Yeah, I mean, some of the older, older stock homes are pretty low. Yeah, I mean, that is a possibility.
Okay.
Yeah. And we didn't want to, we don't really want to do a measurement from average top of curb because for a downsloping lot, for example, 18 feet from average top of curb will let you do a much taller detached ADU because you're, you're starting down low. Yeah. So, we're measuring from adjacent grade. Yeah.
Or vice versa, right?
Or vice versa, yeah. Okay, that's height limits. Next slide, please. So, SB 2011 and AB 2533, these are the newly adopted state laws that go into effect January 1st. And SB 201211 addresses parking and multifamily ADUs. With regards to parking, it just says that if there's an existing uncovered space that's demolished for or replaced for an ADU, you can't require that that uncovered space be replaced. Currently, the same thing applies to covered parking spaces, but state law just took a little further and said you can't do that for uncovered spaces. It, in terms of multifamily ADUs, it increases the number of detached ADUs on a lot, on a multifamily building from two to eight. So, if you have an existing apartment building, let's say, you can do a detached structure with up to eight new dwelling units, accessory dwelling units in there. It is limited, though, like if the primary dwelling only has four units, you can only do a maximum of four, not eight. So, it's either eight or as many primary dwellings you have on the property, whichever is less. We haven't seen ADUs really from added to multifamily structures in Burlingame. I think we've only had one, one or two inquiries, but I don't think they ever went through with them. It also adds a definition for livable space. So, when you're converting space in an existing multifamily building, you can only convert from non-livable spaces, like garages, storage rooms. So, state law more clearly defines what a livable space is. So, that's added as well. Next slide.
Ruben?
Uh huh.
Sorry, another question. If a house is set back on the property, on the property line, because some, some homes back in the day were, and now somebody wants to build an ADU on the front part of the property line, all these, it'll be clear in our, in our thing that somebody can build in the front, correct, if their?
Right.
Family home is in back.
Yeah. So, it's in our code, but it's, state law basically says that you can build in the front, and you're not subject to front setback requirements as long as the ADU is 800 square feet or less. So.
So, you could put it right on the sidewalk?
You can put it right on the front property line. So, you know, it's 800 square feet or less. 800 square feet's pretty large. I mean, if you think of a two-car garage, it's like 440. So, now if you're over that, then you, you have to comply with, you can still put it in the front, but you have to comply with front setback requirements. So, that would only happen.
Over the 800 square feet if your house doesn't have, how do you go over the 800 square feet?
Well, you can, the maximum allowed is?
A thousand.
A thousand square feet. That, that hasn't changed. So, you can do that, but then if you do that, you're no longer a statewide exempt ADU, and you have to comply with more of the regulations, so. We have some cases where houses are set really far back where there might be enough room to do that, but we haven't seen any on your typical, you know, lot in Burlingame.
I'm completely confused now. So, I thought it was 800 was the max, but now it's 1,000?
Well, to, to, pretty much to gain the benefit of the statewide exempt ADUs, you're limited to 800 square feet. You can still do 1,000 square feet, but then you no longer exempt from lot coverage, you're no longer exempt from floor area. So, there's some.
The point.
Well, if you're maxed out on floor area now, for example, then you would have to do an 800-square-foot unit or less. You can't do the larger unit. Yeah.
And just to add on that, Ruben, I, I think that's one important thing to, to know is the statewide exempt means that since you're following what the state says has to be allowed, that they get those exemptions from the requirements of our normal zoning code. So, the 1,000 square feet, that's where Ruben's saying, those will have to still comply with some of our other rules in the zoning code. 800 feet or less, that's where the state's rules control completely. So, we don't really have any pushback we can give to make them comply with our code. But just wanted to clarify that a little bit. When we say statewide exempt, it means the state has told us you can't touch what we say can be done on those 800 square foot ones.
So, if I could just further, sorry, I don't want to get in the weeds. Literally, we're, we were just talking about the tree ordinance, and there's part of the new tree ordinance that says if it is administrative, which I think this is, they have to do, I mean, you're talking about loss of a setback. That means loss of landscaping. So, isn't there part of our code that says they have to show, they could not do the landscaping? I forgot the, sorry, I've forgotten the exact clause, but there was something in there that we added.
Well, and I will say this is the proposed tree ordinance, and we don't want to get too far off.
Proposed, but, but, yeah, when you're, when people are, I know this is probably an unlikely scenario. People are probably not often, if ever, going to do that, but I'm just thinking, no front setbacks, so, anyway.
Yeah, it could certainly have an impact on the lands available. What happens in the tree ordinance, we will certainly discuss.
Yeah.
Next Monday. But yes, this could certainly take away some spaces. An ordinance that maybe you'll hear about on Monday could try to find some ways to make sure that those trees are still planted in other scenarios, though. But that would be part of the tree code, not part of the zoning code, which is what we're talking about here.
But the big picture, this, the state is kind of saying, you really can't put any barriers before somebody to preclude them from at least building an 800-square-foot ADU. Yeah.
And Ruben, when you mentioned earlier that 850 square feet, we had used to allow that to go a little bit higher than what the state allowed, right? And we're, now we're bringing that down. So, that's why when you said 850 earlier, that was kind of our standard that we applied those to. But now we're bringing it down to the 800. Is that right?
Yeah. Yeah, and we tied the two together because 850 was the maximum allowed for like a one-bedroom ADU. So, at the time, we were thinking, well, what's the difference of 50 square feet? Let's just let them have an additional 50 square feet. But because now we're, we're regulating things like four-foot side setbacks, height, we want to be more in line with what the state law says and make sure that folks, you know, comply with that. They want to do more, they can do up to 1,000 square feet, but then that, that no longer is a statewide exempt ADU that kicks them into other regulations that they have to comply with. Okay, let's see. Oh, yes, unpermitted ADUs. So, this is more of clarification. State law added. It changed the date from January 1, 2018, to January 1, 2020 in terms of the city being able to deny permit applications to legalize an unpermitted ADU. So, if anything was built before 2020 now, the city has to take a look at that and. um, the city has to, uh, take a look at that and, um, cannot deny a permit, um, for an unpermitted ADU. Now, we can deny an unpermitted, uh, deny a permit for an unpermitted ADU if it does not, does not comply with the health and safety code. We want to make sure that the people that are living in these ADUs are safe. So, um, if someone builds or builds an ADU without a permit, they come forward to the city, the inspector will go out and will, the inspector would give them recommendations on how to correct the health and safety code violation, and then issue a permit, um, based on them correcting those violations. But state law also clarifies that the city cannot penalize somebody for building an unpermitted ADU, so, um, it's there, it must comply with health and safety standards, and then they can get the permit issued and do the work, um, to correct those violations.
What if they build in excess of the eight hundred square feet? Unpermitted?
That's a good question. We would have to check for floor area and lot coverage, um, but I don't think, I think there is language in state law that says you cannot deny a permit for them not complying with these regulations in our code. That's health and safety and all other regulations in government code section.
And the way this generally came about, and we see this in court, code enforcement a bit, it's to protect those who would have a legal ADU today if ADUs were allowed to be permitted at that time. So someone who has an unpermitted ADU that would still comply with today's standards can request a stay from enforcement if there's some smaller things wrong with it that aren't health and safety related, we're not allowed to do code enforcement. We have to allow them to try to get that to the, to meet the requirements that we currently have, so then they could get it permitted. So it's not for something that's larger or outside, it's for something that's close, that was built before these times, and to give them a time to try to legalize it under what's allowed today.
All right, next slide. So lastly, um, the bulk of the text amendments are in the accessory dwelling unit regulations, but there are a few other sections of the municipal code that also need to be updated. Chapter twenty-five forty is including the uncovered space that we talked about. And then the rest of the chapters, general provisions, appeals, public hearings, those chapters essentially just, we have to strike out ADU permits. Wherever ADU permits show up, we have to correct that, so we're no longer referring to ADU permits, so that's, that's all those chapters are doing. And next slide.
So on the un, on the unpermitted ADUs, what if there's no kitchen?
Well, then the-
Or bathroom?
Yeah, I mean, they have to, an ADU by definition says you have to have a kitchen, you have to have a bathroom. If they say, we don't want to do that, then we would be probably processing them for a conditional use permit for a recreation room and an accessory structure. We would go back to our underlying zoning standards because it's no longer an ADU.
Okay, and then, I mean, it's, it's, there's not a lot we're going to be able to do as far as code enforcement because the walls are covered. Most safety things are behind the walls.
Well, I, I mean, you can deny the conditional use permit and then they would have to tear the building down.
No, I'm saying like the, the spirit of that just doesn't quite ring a bell for me as a contractor because most safety issues are behind the walls. There's not much you're going to look at it when you have a finished floor, finished ceilings, finished walls.
Yeah, I mean, don't they do like exploratory, you can cut, you know, in the sheet rock, you can look at plumbing and-
Well, you tell me, is that going to be allowed?
That is what-
There's someone's-
Yeah, that's-
That's what the building department does.
Yeah.
And for health and safety, that would be, we are allowed affect.
Okay, all right.
So it- Out of curiosity, what is, just broadly, what is health and safety, what, what, what encompasses health and safety? What would- What-
Fire or smoke?
Yeah, I mean, does the building have heating? Does the building have proper plumbing, was the plumbing installed correctly? Does it, was the gas line installed correctly for the, for the cooking unit? I mean, those are all things that are, we want to make sure don't go wrong and something bad happened inside the building.
And inspector will actually, they will still go in there and look?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Gas leaks, I mean, you know, it's sewer laterals, making sure those were put in place.
They'll even look at like FEMA flood zones to make sure that it's raised in a certain area, that could be a health and safety issue too, so. These, it is currently happening already, it's the sort of things that would make a house, uh, unlivable today, and we would have to red tag as well, so. If it's something that would red tag a building, it's something that we would essentially have to red tag an ADU for.
I mean, like egress from bedrooms, that, that's huge, right? Making sure the opening is correct so that-
Probably-
Get it out in a fire.
Those, right?
Yeah.
What about JDUs? So are junior ADUs can go up to five hundred square feet? Put on to your current home?
Uh, within the walls of an existing home. It can't be an addition, so state law says it can only be converted within the existing space, or it can be part of a new house.
Okay, so it has to be within what we are, you already have, you can't add on-
Correct.
Part of an additional square footage, okay.
Correct, yeah.
Can we comment on, um, how the, the redlined version or as about it?
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, you know, ADUs, I get a lot of questions about ADUs and people who want to add ADUs on their property or convert space, whatever it is, and, and I, I find it hard to tell people to go and take a look at the ADU guidelines on our website, um, and instead I try to interpret things for them. And I was, as I was reading through the redline version, um, it seems like just a basic, um, uh, table of contents could be a little bit helpful because as I was reading through it, I would come along and I'll go, oh, but what about the maximum square footage? And so that's my question here, and then I realized as I read much later on, talk about size. And so you kind of have to piece information together if, um, for layperson. But I don't know if that's something that's, is that not the way we write our, um, municipal code with a, or, or could there be, uh, an ADU document that answered all the general questions but done with some form of local contents?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we, we, um, have something like that now, um, we have like a J, uh, ADU handout. The, the challenge is it, it's very difficult to interpret state law. And while we try to make it as simple as possible, it's very difficult to make it simple. We want to make it simple just for our own staff to be able to interpret it and follow it. And you look at different cities, for examples, and some are way more complicated, some are too simple, so it's left for too much room for interpretation. What we will do is we'll, uh, I've seen some cities come up with like a very simple table, like a table format, and they'll simply list like number, size, um, setbacks, height. So we'll definitely do something that we'll include on our webpage and we have as a handout as well. That will at least serve as a guide-
Yeah.
Um, for the basics.
To the weeds.
Yeah.
Into this, right, and but if, most people's questions are about like, what's the size, what's the height? Where can it be, things like that?
Yeah.
Kind of related to that, um, the other questions kind of come out of the kitchen, but often get like, what type of kitchen needs to be in there? And as, and I read in the, um, in the code here, it says a food preparation counter and storage cabin is the, that are of reasonable size in relation to the size of the ADU. So that's very subjective, and, um, I have found some cities that literally say you must have six linear feet of counter space. So that gives you a guideline, oh, three feet on one side of the sink, three feet on the other side of the sink, that gives you some space. Because otherwise, I feel like, well, what I determine reasonable is very different from what someone else might find reasonable. And it could lead us down a path of people, you know, arguing for, you know, I want a tiny kitchen like this. And then also alongside with that, the refrigerator, so some cities determine, um, in ADUs, junior ADUs, you can have under-counter refrigerators that have a freezer and refrigerator component. And once you're beyond that, you must have a full height refrigerator. So are we, do we designate that? Do we help people to understand what type of refrigeration and, um, preparation space in the kitchen?
Yeah, I mean, the, we have to be careful, we, we don't want to necessarily get, get into the weeds like the counter space. Maybe at one point we did, we did have that, but, you know, if we say six feet and then someone says, I only have room to do five feet, well, then we're stuck with saying, no, you can't do it, so I think we, we left it somewhat open to be flexible. So, uh, we want folks to be able to propose a kitchen. We don't want folks to pro- propose something that they're not going to use as an ADU, so we, well, staff is good at looking at like kitchen, making sure there's some counter space, but again, we didn't want to get to the point where we're requiring a certain number of feet. I mean, yes, I think it would be helpful because then you know, but then you always get situation, we say, oh, that'll never happen, but then you get a situation where they don't have enough room for a full counter, or, you know, depending on the size of the unit. Because these ADUs can get pretty small too, everyone thinks about how big they can make it, but some of them can get pretty small. Uh, so you're in, within a tight space, so we, we would prefer to keep that flexible and have staff work with the applicant on, on meeting that requirement.
Okay.
And I think same thing for the refrigerator, for the ADU, we do say refrigerator and freezer compartments because we don't want somebody proposing, you know, your college refrigerator for an ADU, right?
People have done that.
Yeah, it's all, or just a wine cooler.
I've said in a book before, where there is a little tiny freezer thing and a refrigerator underneath and it met their requirement. So just, um, you know, just wondering, like, how do we want to make that clear?
I thought this has a, has a statement in it that it had to have separate door.
Yeah.
This covers that.
Which kind of puts you into the twenty cubic feet.
Had to have, no, it has separate doors.
On the-
You can have a separate door in the-
Oh, yeah, with separate doors, yeah. So we have refrigerator with separate doors for the refrigerator and freezer compartments. So that would eliminate your, there's really small that has the combined freezer and refrigerator component. We, we were trying to make it kind of a standard size refrigerator for ADUs. Now for JADUs, I think it just says you have to have a efficiency kitchen. And that's defined, um, and we can look at state law too in terms of, um, that definition.
So JDUs are only a refrigerator, is what I recall, right? Because I know a lot of people use like wine fridges for, refrigerator for JDU.
They define it as an efficiency kitchen, as Ruben said, we can look more into the details on that, but it is state mandated. Like you have to have certain countertops, you have to have, the proportional in size that was brought up by Commissioner Say earlier is actually part of the state's code. So it's, it's vague, but we are carrying that language over to ours, so. As, uh, we've talked about, we can be a little bit more specific, but since this is being tested, since this is constantly changing in the analysis of what's being presented, we're sometimes hesitant to make something too specific because then we could be, uh, in violation of what the state's trying to ask us to do.
Yeah. And that, that's part of the feedback we received from HCD too, is the last update on some things we were too specific on and it, it came back to bite us, so the state law says you can't regulate certain things for ADUs.
Are they specific about, because I, I can't open my thing again, I'm sorry, about like any kind of cook, like a microwave or an oven or a-
Yeah.
Bunsen burner or what?
Yeah, yeah, so, so we do, um, uh, a sink and cooking facility, permanent stove or oven, um, where is it, I'm not finding it now, but we do, oh, um, a sink and cooking facility with appliances, for example, microwave, toaster oven or hot plate, that's for an efficiency kitchen. So an efficiency kitchen is going to be probably what you'll find in a JADU, it's more compact, it's small. Whereas in an ADU, you want more of a fuller kitchen, I mean, not, not a full gourmet kitchen, but, um, yeah, we do try, we did in that, try to make it a little bit more detailed because those were a lot of the questions we were asking. And we wanted to make sure that if you are building a JDU or an ADU, that you are putting in the proper cooking facility, uh, as well.
So the, um, comment about certificates of occupancy? So, um, I understand what's being said in here. I get clients sometimes who are planning for a larger addition remodel to their home, but they also want to add a detached ADU to their property. And so then they think, can I build a detached ADU and then move into it? And then not have to pay rent somewhere else and then look over our own house project as it's getting remodeled and added on to? Is this saying that that's not allowed?
Correct.
Why?
And that's state law. While in certain cases, let's say you build an ADU and you're living in the detached ADU, and maybe you're just doing an interior remodel of the house, right? That's not so much of a concern, but for example, if you're building a new house, then you've got trenches dug up, you've got equipment lying around, you've got, um, pathways that are uneven, right, mud. So it's more of a safety concern that the certificate of occupancy be issued to the house first before, um, the ADU. And you cannot live in the ADU while there's being, construction being done on the house or a new house built. That's the, that's state law, that's, that's non-negotiable, and that is a concern of our chief building official and fire official as well.
So let's say somebody's perhaps planning on building a new house, but they build their ADU first. The minute they do demolition on that house to build a new house, they can no longer live in that ADU, is that correct?
Yeah, like if, if they do it a couple of years later.
Yeah.
I think, I think maybe, I mean, perhaps in that case, the chief building official might, might look at the condition of the construction and see if it's possible, but this really speaks to kind of if they're happening at the same time.
Go ahead.
And state law doesn't-
On the-
Clarify that.
On the JDUs, do we determine in our code if you have like an unfinished attic space that you want to create into an ADU? Is that something that is in our code that you can or you can't do that, or does have to, you can't maximize your F A R on your lot?
I mean, it's, it's within the, the, the space of an existing home, so you can do that.
You can.
Of course, it needs to comply with all other building code, fire code regulations, but, yeah, it would allow you to do that. It allows you to do that within a basement as well, an existing basement. I love all these questions.
Did my homework, read through. So the maximum size, so I see that you struck out two or more bedrooms. That mean now there is no bedroom count? You can put in as many bedrooms as can fit in an eight hundred square foot ADU?
Right, so existing regulations, existing law says you can limit a, a studio or one bedroom to eight hundred and fifty square feet or two or more bedrooms to one thousand square feet. So there was never really a, a limit on the number of bedrooms, but we want to just make it simpler and just say you can do a maximum of up to a thousand square feet, we're not going to look at how many bedrooms are in the ADU. It's just simplifying it.
Create a little dorm.
But keep in mind too that if, if you're over eight hundred, then you've got to comply with lot coverage and F A R, so you may not be able to do a thousand or eight hundred and fifty, you might, you might be, only be able to do eight hundred.
Because once you're over eight hundred, all one thousand, all whatever is over eight hundred, the whole thing gets counted against you.
Eight hundred and one square feet, the whole eight hundred and one square feet.
Just a one square.
But in that case, they'll just reduce it to eight hundred.
And I had a question about, about, um, ADU on top of a garage, okay. I think as I'm reading through that, I'm not understanding how that's happening. I wrote, my note was language for ADU on top of a garage. I think you had made reference to ADUs can be on top of a garage, but, um, maybe it's in the height, I think in maximum heights, something.
Oh, the limit to two stories, I think it is, there's that language in there.
It's just I don't see the language about building an ADU on top of a garage.
We, we don't specifically state that it's allowed, we state that it's limited to two stories.
An ADU is limited to two stories?
So you can do it above a garage. But if we do that, then we have to start including every single scenario that's available and we, we don't want to get into that level of detail, so, yeah, as long as you comply with the height limit and the code now states that it's limited to two stories, not, not one story. So you can do a, an ADU above a garage, above an existing garage or above a new garage. Right, if somebody still wants to build a new garage and they want to build an ADU on top of that, um, they can do that.
Then meet the setbacks.
Yeah, and there's trade-offs with doing that, so you're going to take up- Yeah. And there's trade-offs with doing that. So you're going to take up less of your yard space by doing an ADU on top of the garage. So that's one benefit of doing that.
All the neighbors complain, they always get the neighbors complaining about looking into one's yard and. I mean, help it, right?
Yeah, I mean, we, I think we all share some concern about that, but it's at the point where state law is requiring this to, to be able to be allowed.
Ruben, on new constructions, a lot of the new construction that comes in front of us, they have the garage and an ADU. Do they have to have a garage by code?
They do not.
So they don't have to build a garage?
Right. So typically what we see is an existing home and detached garage, um, being demolished. And that a new ADU is being built in place of that garage, existing garage. In that situation, those parking spaces do not have to be replaced. That's why you're seeing a lot of new homes or additions with ADUs without garages. I mean, it's to the, almost to the point where, um, there's really no situation where parking is required for an ADU, almost.
Or even a house.
And some cities have even just said, no parking required for ADUs. Just left it at that. I can tell you that from the ADUs that have been built, we have not been receiving complaints about ADUs or by, or about, um, the amount of additional street parking there is now because of the ADU.
Because they're not being rented out.
Huh?
They're not being rented out, being used for the boom boom room, not, not for renting.
Yeah.
And, and there's no design discretion at all, right?
Correct. Only, only limited.
Shipping container ADUs are totally fine.
I'm sorry, what?
These shipping container ADUs.
Yeah, the prefab.
Yeah.
Some are shipping.
I mean, they're like.
Right in front of the house. You can put it right in front of the house too.
Yeah.
In front of the house?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, four feet setback.
Eight, 800 square feet or less.
He should.
There's no front 70 feet. Most lots are 50 feet. Uh, any other questions? What we're looking for you, from you tonight is, um, a motion to recommend to city council. It'll go to city council for introduction at their next meeting on December 2nd. And then, uh, for adoption at their second meeting in December. And the timing is important because if we don't have an adopted, um, AD ordinance, basically our ordinance becomes null and void. So we want to make sure that we, uh, get this approved. Um, and we're also incorporating the new laws, so that's good. We'll be up to speed. And we'll continue to work with HCD on making sure we're complying with all their, um, comments.
I'll make a motion. Um, okay, so I will, I'll make a motion to, uh, adopt.
Sorry, uh, we need to open up for a public comment.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, do we have any members, or do we have any questions for staff? No, we did that. Do we have any members of the public attending in person who wish to speak on the item?
No public comment.
We're going to close the public hearing. Do we have any other comments? And now you can do your.
Sorry for jumping out of order. Um, so I move that we, um, adopt an ordinance amending Title 25 per the staff report, the list of chapters, unless you want me to read them, um, to the city council.
Just to clarify, that's a recommendation for approval to the city council?
It's a recommendation. Well, it, it said here, we recommend adoption, oh, by the city council.
Absolutely. Perfect.
Yeah.
And we just need a second.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Say, second by Commissioner Schmidt. Any discussion? And we have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Camerado?
Aye.
Commissioner Foss?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
Commissioner Shores?
Aye.
Commissioner Say?
Aye.
Vice Chair Horn?
Aye.
Chair Lewenthal?
Aye. The motion passes 7000. I assume there's no appeals.
There's none.
Uh, moving on to agenda item number nine B, proposed rules of procedure of the planning commission. And we have staff report.
Thank you, planning commission. Uh, I will keep this brief. Um, this is a proposal by staff to update the planning commission procedures. Um, the last time the planning commission procedures were approved and adopted by both the planning commission and city council was back in 2002. So over 20 years ago, um, staff has done an overhaul of the procedures. The bulk of, um, the previous procedures remain, except they're reorganized and rewritten in a new format. Um, and there have been some updates made to it based on best, best practices and what's seen as common practice by planning commissions, um, throughout the state. A few key noted changes that I outlined in, uh, the staff report were a change to the minutes. Currently, the planning commission does transcribed or some version of transcribed minutes, um, for the planning commission. The recommendation is to move to action minutes, which is more commonly used for minutes now throughout the state. Um, since we do record and post all of our hearings now, any member of the public or the planning commission or staff can go back and watch a planning commission meeting. They are at a minimum kept for 10 years, but ultimately really will be kept in perpetuity in the record. Um, since there is a video record, the need for transcribing all of the dialogue is no longer necessary. And we'd move to just documenting the motion, um, as well as the vote. So you can quickly refer to the minutes to see the action that was taken on that item. Secondly, we are mov- moving to, instead of reading the email correspondence or written correspondence from the public at a planning commission meeting from, um, the staff seat, we will be providing those email, um, written comments to the planning commission ahead of the meeting. Uh, basically, any member of the public who submits written public comment by 4:00 PM is bundled up and sent to the planning commission. So you can review before the meeting. And then it's posted online. So the public has access to those public comments. Uh, and then we do not read them into the record. Again, this is more common practice in, uh, most cities. It saves time at the meeting to read all of those emails and gives the planning commission more time to digest and read for yourself what the theme of the comments are. Uh, city council also discussed this at their last meeting and are changing their procedures as well. Um, and then the last, uh, item noted in the staff report was staff recommendations. Currently, city staff does not do recommendations formally in our staff reports and presentations before the planning commission. We do mention in the new procedures, staff recommendations, um, that moving forward, we will be providing those in, uh, in our staff reports as well as our staff presentations. Essentially, we already do, we are drafting findings, we are drafting conditions of approval, we're drafting resolutions that we're bringing before the planning commission for your consideration. That in essence is staff's recommendations on the project, compiled from not just the planning division, but all of city staff, including engineering and the different departments who have reviewed an application for the, um, for the portion of the review that happens before the planning commission sees it. We just want to be clear and transparent about that recommendation and also be able to maybe better articulate um, why staff is making certain recommendations. For example, if, uh, staff has real concerns with the development application that was submitted, we would like to be able to bring it forward for denial when we are able to and explain the reasons for that. So that would require staff being able to make recommendations to do so. Um, and again, very common practice in all cities. In fact, this is the only city that I'm aware of that doesn't do staff recommendations for planning commission. So those were the main, um, changes beyond what, uh, was existing in the protocols that have, have, um, shifted over. Available for any questions or discussion on the item.
It's okay. Um, yeah, I, uh, regarding your, um, the, the last comment that you made about staff might want to do, make a denial, would that also include staff might suggest a design consultant?
Um, how so? Recommend a design consultant to an applicant or?
Yeah, to us. So we see, we do see some designs, not a lot, but we do get them on occasion where if there's pretty much a consensus that it would save everybody time, including the applicant, to, to go to a, um, don't we call those a design consultant? Yeah. So would that be something you're talking about? That the staff would kind of make a judgment that, you know, this probably is a candidate? Are you saying that too? That, that would be in there?
We, we could. Um, at minimum, I would be saying that we would be, uh, providing staff recommendation in the staff report of, you know, what we're recommending in our draft resolutions. And with the design review, we could move into providing staff recommendations of, these are the conversations we've had with the applicant prior to coming to a hearing that we've been pressing them to make changes on. Um, so we can, I've seen that done in other cities too. So, um, I think we do flush out the details of how much staff would be, um, providing recommendations in staff reports. I think just at the minimum, we want to be very clear that we're going to start doing it.
What about public comment? Would that facilitate staff recommendation? I know there's a few times over the last year where people, public have made comments about drainage. And it's like, it's not really our purview to comment on drainage, but certainly it's public works. And it might sound better coming from a public works engineer saying, we recommend this project based on the plans. Then it kind of absolves us from having to even go down that road.
Mm-hmm. We can chime in and explain the process that occurs. Because before an application comes before planning commission, there's hours of review that occur, um, at the staff level. And we could chime in and say that and talk about the, um, review that public works is done on stormwater and the conditions of approval that are outlined for, for compliance for the project. So.
My other one about public comment is like, we ju- we just had a difficult one where we had to deny a project based on distant views. Would you comment on that or make recommendations based on those types of? Okay.
Yes.
Would you then also go in the homes? Staff go in the homes?
Yes, and Ruben and I were talking, we, staff has been pretty hands-off, um, in that regard. Um, if we start doing staff recommendations, yes, we would strengthen our analysis of, of those type of reviews, um, to, uh, justify what the recommendation staff is bringing forward is.
I have a question about, um, projects that have now come before us because they've changed their original design from what was approved. And so, um, now we don't really get a staff. We don't get feedback from staff. We just get what they're wanting to do and what the changes might be. Um, and we've denied, I think, some projects to move forward. Would staff be able to help us or I guess make recommendation on those as well?
Yes.
So it's, um, is this intended to be a, a expansion of, uh, what's currently in your staff reports? You have suggested findings for each project. And it sort of serves as a guideline, like, oh, for mass and scale and this, that, this, this meets and is compatible with the neighborhood. Um, is this an expanded, almost like we've already done all this aside from tho- those items? We're also looking at the, um, more subjective elements and the design, um, elements initially. And we recommend based on our review that, that you approve this as proposed? Or is that what it is sort of expanded? Because you've had the findings and that, you know, serves as a guideline.
Right. And, and that's where the kind of transparency of we're already doing this, right? We are drafting those findings and we are, we're not bringing before you like findings for denial and findings for approval. We are picking an avenue and drafting the findings for it. So it's being transparent that we are recommending approval. Here's the draft findings based on our analysis. Now, again, planning commission always has the ability to not follow staff's recommendations. You have the ability to edit any findings, edit any conditions of approval, um, uh, deny a project. Now, there are a lot of state laws around housing, so we'd, we'd chime in if there was a desire to deny, deny a housing project because state law protects that a lot. So we'd want to discuss that. But, um, they are just our recommendations. We just want to be very clear that based off our review analysis, these are the findings and the condition of approval that we have put together based on our review. And then we could elaborate on those more.
When, if this was approved, when would this be, um, valid? When would this begin immediately?
So, um, the intent is if planning commission, uh, makes a motion tonight to approve the procedures, this then, uh, municipal code requires that it's adopted by city council. This would move on to city council for their adoption. Um, again, if that happens tonight by planning commission sometime in December, we'd take it to city council within this starting to take effect in 2025. Um, at the, the bare minimum, you would start seeing on staff reports, you know, staff recommendations and in our presentation. For example, tonight, Ruben finished with questions. We would have a follow-up slide that would have staff's recommendation. We in essence do, we were asking for you to recommend approval of the ordinance. We just be very clear. And the draft ordinance is basically our staff's recommendation of how the language be written. So we would be, we'd be clear about that stuff.
Um, and sorry, another question about, um, I think it was item, written public comments item. Um, did you say that the 4:00 PM deadline is based on a state standard?
It's not based on a state standard. Cities have the ability to, to select a time. We selected four o'clock, giving enough time to compile the comments and send it to you all to have enough time to review before your meeting. As well as if a member of the public didn't meet the four o'clock deadline, they would have the ability to still come in person to planning commission if they wanted to provide public comment.
What's, so for the recent, oh, I'm sorry, just to finish that for, so we had that recent, um, application where we had numerous, um, letters that were written, read into the public record. I, I don't remember all the times, but, um, I kept checking my email and I think we were getting them after 4:00 PM. They were, just kept coming in. So in that case, if we were to a- adopt this in say 4:00 PM or if the city council adopts, and 4:00 PM is acceptable, then anything that comes in between four and seven will all, will still be read into the public record?
No. So we compiled for the Mercy School project you're referencing, we waited until five o'clock, took all public comment that was submitted until five o'clock and read that into the record. After the five o'clock time, I know the planning commission, you have your own group email. Some members of the public found your group email and sent you group email. Um, but if they are coming into the public, we're being very clear on our procedures as well as the website, that public comment be submitted to public comments at City of Burlingame. Um, any public comment that comes there gets posted and provided to you. After that five o'clock timeline, they are not part of the record for that, for you all to consider as part of your decision-making. They would need to come in and make a public comment into the record at that point.
So, um, Commissioner Camerado, do you have a question?
No, I thi- I think, I think the, I have a statement actually. So anything, well, I have a question. Anything after five o'clock won't be part of the, there will, there will be no email or there won't be any records of those past five o'clock emails that come in is?
They will not be, um, it'll be the four o'clock timeline. Um, anything from four o'clock or before will be sent to you for your consideration and posted. Because a component of this is, this is a Brown Act body, anything that you have as material as part of your decision-making needs to be available to the public. So we post all of those public comments too, so the public's aware. So you and them have the same information you're using. If a member of the public wants to provide a comment, public comment after four, four o'clock, they'll need to do it in person.
And that I, I believe we're going to have a kickback email too, right? If someone submits a comment after 4:00 PM, it'll tell them, please come and fit in person.
So, so.
Yeah.
Okay. So we no longer will have a deadline of five o'clock. Because right now we have a five o'clock deadline. So I guess my question.
We're moving it up to four.
Or in five.
So we'll be taking that five o'clock deadline and moving it up to four.
Four, got it.
And we'll be in line with what council is doing as.
So, I, I don't even know how to exactly put this right. But let's say there is a controversial project. Someone does not live in town. And they just find out about it and they can't make it here. So they miss the four o'clock deadline. You have a recommendation and you didn't see that comment either yet. Or when you prepared your staff report with your recommendation. So I'm, I'm just wondering where's that, where's the space for that person to have an impact on the, the, this body that might have a different, might learn something that's different than the staff recommendation? I guess I'm, I mean, if we have to, we have to do it. But I'm, I'm seeing a problem with the public process, the public not having. public, the public not having as much ability to input, I guess, because there's no purpose to showing up, there's no purpose to us, really, at some point in time if we have no interaction with the public. So I don't know, just seems strange a little bit, I think.
Don't we have, whoever here at staff level said, do we have any emails that have come in?
Yeah, are they, are those, yeah, can you write emails then?
No, so that, that stops at four.
Oh, I see.
So the public always has the ability, as it always has, to come in and make public comment at the hearing, to listen to staff presentation, council, you know, council's presentation, or planning commission's presentation on the item and provide public comment. The addition of written public comment is to allow another way for members of the public to communicate to the planning commission that you're using as consideration for your action on that item. We are just saying that that avenue is available to the public until four o'clock, so that the planning commission, as well as the public, has the ability to review that written public comment before you're taking action on the item. So if they are unable to make that four o'clock deadline, they would need to come in to provide that public comment.
And if they, but they can't come in, that's too bad. If they're elderly or, sorry, I mean, I'm just saying, or don't live around here, that's, and they missed it, they missed it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, yeah, we would be encouraging people to, and making the public aware of that four o'clock deadline. Right now, it's five. So until five o'clock, then we read it into the public record. You are getting emails, but technically, the planning commission getting those emails and reading them and considering them as part of your decision-making process does provide a potential gap in Brown Act, because then the public's not aware of those emails you're getting, that you're reading that they're not aware of. So that's why we're creating a clear cutoff. Otherwise, we can't continually monitor emails coming in and be reading them like real time into the record. That presents in itself a complication, because to remember as a Brown Act body, the public is supposed to get every information you're getting.
So on that Brown Act, so let's say we get an email that one of us thinks is important enough to bring to the body. Can we read that email into the record that we've now obtained this email that we think is, has some important information, and so that the rest of the body knows about that email?
So if you read in the procedures, it also states that the planning commission, if you all each have individual planning commission emails, if you've gotten an email about a item that's coming before you for action, that, say, an applicant or a resident has sent to you directly, it does indicate to forward that on to staff so that we can make it available to the rest of the planning commission as well as the public, so they're aware of the information that you are receiving. But again, that would be up until the four o'clock cutoff time. It isn't to say that if somehow someone got your email or sitting out in the audience and sends you an email in the middle of your deliberation, that that be read into the record for the rest of the planning commission. We are-
I think I'm talking about between that four and seven PM timeframe. If we get something that, if we happen to see something that comes in-
If we-
Problem. Yeah, a lot of people aren't even looking at that.
Yeah, so many other cities do this. This is, I understand we're concerned about the two or three hours in between. We wouldn't want to start being arbitrary and saying, we got this one email, and we think it's valuable, but this other email, and then a member of the public said, well, I sent it at 6:05, and then mine wasn't read. We need, when we adopt procedures, we need to hold to them, and it will be, if we receive an email at 4:02, we won't pass that along, because then we start blurring the line, and then we create more of an issue, that when procedures are created, we need to stick to the procedures, so that we're being fair to all participants of the process.
So I think one of the things is we want the public to know that this-
Correct.
So do an outreach, I don't know, like an E-boss type thing for-
And this is happening at city council too, so we're going to do comprehensive outreach, and again, that it be uniform across all of our decision-making bodies. Yeah, I know it's, it can be challenging, because where do you cut the line? And I know that, and I've had members of the public are like, oh, I submitted it at, like, 6:05. But I've also seen where boards have been more lenient, and then we've had a lot of backlash, because we've made kind of arbitrary allowances for certain groups, or this person, or I was for the project and you allowed it, and I was against the project and you didn't allow it, and then it starts to seem like favoritism. So it's just easier to just be very clear and stick to the procedures that are written, so that there isn't any accusations that we're playing any type of difference. It's same with, if we were just getting them real time, if staff misses an email that comes in and we don't read it into the record, we pose the threat of they going, well, my email wasn't sent into the record, and I sent it in at, you know, 7:02. And so we just, we just want to be clear, make it easy for staff and planning commission and the public to know what the parameters are.
Thing to note is, the Brown Act doesn't require the remote participation that we're typically looking at. We do, of course, want to welcome people to come in and make a public comment, but a lot of this came out from the pandemic, and we wanted to make sure that people could provide their comments in a safe space, and of course, we always still want to do that. But moving it back here an hour before that isn't actually making a meaningful change in the Brown Act compliance. It's just trying to find a way that we can better compile these to make sure that it's, you know, done in an orderly manner. One thing that I do want to note too is, there will be accommodations made if someone makes a request to the city clerk that they have a disability and they're not able to come in. So of course, we're always going to make sure that we accommodate those sorts of requests. This is just for the ordinary written public comment.
Also through the chair, keep in mind that public hearing notices are sent out 10 days before the meeting, and agendas are posted typically the Thursday evening before the meeting, so there is enough time, I think, for, if the public is interested in a particular project, there is enough time for them to review it and be able to either submit an email before that four o'clock deadline, or come to the meeting and speak.
Ruben, I have a quick question. What is staff seeing at the counter with people coming to the counter, looking at projects that might be on our agenda? I mean, how, have you seen it, like, is it dismal?
Yeah, I mean, we, I think most of the communication, maybe Amalia can speak to it, is via email now, if someone's interested, but we rarely get a neighbor coming into the office wanting to see plans. I think most of it might be through email or phone calls.
Well, it helps that you now have it included in the agendas online. It used to be you couldn't, you didn't have access that way. You'd have to go in person and look at the copies.
Yeah.
Back of the room.
It's primarily communications via email. The only times that we'll get someone from the public come to the counter is if it's a good neighbor really concerned about, for instance, one of the recent projects about drainage. So if it's a contentious project, those are usually the times that someone will come in person, otherwise communications via email.
Any other questions about the procedures, or anything that's missing? I know they went from like eight pages to 13 pages, so they're, they're a bit beefier now.
Do we have any members of the public who wish to speak on this, or do we get any emails? I assume no.
I don't think I can read any. There have none. We have received none.
And we'll close the public hearing. Do we have any comments or motions?
I'm going to make a proper motion this time.
The motion would be to adopt here. It's actually, the way it's written is kind of strange. It's not a recommendation. You would adopt it here, and then the city council would adopt at their level as well. So if there is a motion to adopt, that would be the-
Can I, can I say something to the motion?
Sure.
Recommendation? I think it's really, it's a big change, and I know it's been a long, I understand where this is coming from, but I think it, for people, we have lost a lot of participation over the last several years, unless there's a huge project. So I think it's really important, as Commissioner Camarado said, to do a big outreach on this, and I think that should be part of the recommendation, that there's a, I don't know how you do it on the e-news or whatever, or post it somewhere, you know, just got to show up, got to have your stuff in by four, or this, that, or the other thing, so people know, because they're going to be really, I think, I think they'll be upset. I mean, people like to participate. They, I would be upset. So I think it's really important that people know what's going on, that, you know, you don't get it in, sorry, too late, right?
Or you can come in person.
Hurting on the notice card?
Will be. It should be.
Included on there?
Yeah.
That the comments must be mailed by 4:00 PM.
I mean, that's certainly something I'll let the director come up, but that's something that we could certainly do, where we can put it on the agenda to make sure that everyone knows that that off will happen, and that the agenda will certainly be updated that way on the website, but not sure if the director-
Yeah, city council has discussed, because this is a bigger change for the city council meeting than the planning commission meeting. Your cutoff was at five o'clock. We're moving it up to four to align with what city council's doing, because city council also does, has closed sessions at times, so they meet, if they have closed session, they're meeting at 5:00, 5:30, and so they, they need a little extra time. But certainly, we can put that on our city website, in the e-news, and in our noticing, so it's very clear. Again, this is no intent to stifle public participation at all. It's so that we can get you the information quicker, post it to the public so they can read it. Sometimes people can tune out and miss public comment. This way, they can read it, it'll be available to read. So, and some people digest information, you know, better written than verbal, and so it kind of offers you that diversity. So absolutely, we hear you, Commissioner Path. We will do everything we can to get that word out. We do want people to participate in these discussions.
Thanks. Okay.
I was, I was-
Oh, I'm sorry, just because I botched it up the last time. I move that we adopt the proposed changes to our planning commission procedures.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Se, seconded by Commissioner Hran. Any other discussion? Then may we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Camarado?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuff?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
Commissioner Shores?
Aye.
Commissioner Se?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hran?
Aye.
Chair Lewenthal?
Aye. The adoption passes 7:00, 00, 00, with no appeals. Okay, that finishes up regular action. Moving on to number 10, design review. There are no design reviews tonight. Number 11, commissioner reports. Any commissioner reports? Okay. Number 12, director reports.
I didn't have anything to share.
Since I'm here. The one additional item I did want to share, and I'm, and Ruben, I apologize if you already shared this at a previous meeting, but the Mercy School project did get called for review by city council. If the planning commission are not aware, I wanted to make sure you were aware. That is being reviewed and will be scheduled sometime early in the new year for city council to review.
You mean, it got appealed?
We have an appeal process for members of the public can appeal. We also have a call for review, which is a form of appeal, where a city council member can call an item up to their body to, so a council member did call this item up for review. Essentially, it's an appeal.
And I'm not a director, but if I may have a second, just a couple things that the audience may be interested in that are coming at the December 2 public hearing of the city council. We will likely have our tree ordinance read there, so we want to make sure that members of the public are there to see the first reading and potential adoption of that ordinance, or adopting the first reading. And then another ordinance amending how tobacco retailer permits are issued in the city. So anyone who's interested in tobacco, or where it's being sold, or how it's being regulated, can tune into that meeting as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
And finally, agenda number 13, future agenda items. Any future agenda items? No? Okay. And we will call this meeting adjourned at 8:25.